Welcome to the biannual candidate forum brought to you by CAG, Coronado Shores Community Alliance Group. I'm Jerry McDonald, manager of the Coronado Shores, and it's my honor to be your moderator today. Coronado City Council candidates for the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election running for a four-year term are: Mayor Richard Bailey, Casey Tanaka, Mike Donovan, John Duncan, and Tom Rowan. Running unopposed for mayor, Mayor Richard Bailey, who will address Coronado Shores residents at a later date. We will be sending you a YouTube video of Mayor Bailey's Coronado update the second week in October. For city council, running for a four-year term for two seats: Casey Tanaka, United States history teacher and former mayor of Coronado; Mike Donovan, Coronado City Council member, businessman, Navy captain retired; John Duncan, attorney and small businessman; and Tom Rowan, businessman.
Actually, Tim.
Sorry. My apologies, Tim. The Community Alliance Group at the shores as representatives from each of our 10 buildings. Our mission is to be a bridge between the shores and the village of Coronado along with the city officials, because we are all one community. We have approximately 1,500 homes in our shores community, and we appreciate each of your participation in today's forum. We will be presenting our residents' major concerns and are eager to hear your thoughts on and possible solutions to these issues. First, we want to thank each of you for joining us. Please introduce yourself, tell us about yourself, and why you are running for city council. Please limit your bio and answers to questions to two minutes. Mr. Tanaka, we will hear from you first.
Hi, my name is Casey Tanaka. I've been living in Coronado since 1983. I went to school in Coronado from second grade to 12th grade. I graduated from CHS in 1994 and I went to UCSD. I have a degree with honors in history and a minor in political science. I've been teaching at Coronado High School since 1999, so this is my 22nd year teaching at Coronado High School. I also had the honor of serving on the city council from 2002 to 2016. And those last eight years from 2008 to 2016, I was the 50th mayor of the city of Coronado. Around March, when our city and, you know, the United States went into quarantine, I started to really think a lot about the city and my participation. And I feel that in the years to come, there are going to be a number of really significant decisions, particularly budget-related, as our hotel tax income or TOT has gone down because of the pandemic. And I just think the most obvious thing about a city council is you want to have your most experienced leaders there to help make those decisions. So I'm running because I want to do my part to provide experienced leadership to the city of Coronado. And I want to thank the shores for this opportunity to talk with you and your residents.
Thank you, Casey. I think we're on to our next candidate. Mr. Donovan, you're next.
Thank you, Jerry. Well, good evening, everyone. First, I would like to thank the shores, and in particular Sharon Lapid, Ann Kennedy, and Jerry McDonald for all their efforts in setting up this forum. I am Mike Donovan, and I'm running for reelection to a second term on the Coronado City Council. It has been a privilege to serve as a council member for the past four years. In 2016, I ran on my background and experience. My 30 years of Navy experience, both active duty and reserve, along with my 30-plus years of corporate business experience, where I managed an organization of more than 100 people and a budget of more than $100 million, have served me well as a council member. Before I was elected, I also did my homework by attending most of the city council meetings and city commissioning committee meetings in 2016, as well as meetings for county board supervisors, the court authority board, the sandag board and their committees, all of which helped me hit the ground running after the election. In 2020, I'm running on my record and continuing my advocacy for residential quality of life. As a council member, I've always fully researched issue, getting input from city staff, residents, subject matter experts, and my own research. I've also always strived to explain the logic behind each of my positions. While not everyone may agree with me, I do want them to know how I arrived at my position. So with that, I look forward to the discussion this evening and for the opportunity to respond to the question presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Duncan, now it's your turn.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is John Duncan. I'm a first-time candidate for city council. I'm extremely excited to run. I believe that I can bring a fresh perspective and utilize my professional background as an attorney, where I've been practicing litigation as well as transactional law for the last 25 years. Brief about myself personally, I moved here over a decade ago with my family. My wife Peggy and I had met in law school in 1992 here at the University of San Diego. We moved here to raise our children. We have four children. My older son Connor is 18. He unfortunately is doing his first semester of college from home due to the pandemic, which is a serious issue. Hopefully, we can talk about some more later on tonight. And I have 15-year-old triplets that are freshmen, beginning their freshman as well, primarily at home in high school. So why did I run for city council? Why am I running now? I want to preserve and protect Coronado for the future. Selfishly, for my four children, but also for everybody's children and the future generations to come in Coronado. We are definitely facing some serious major issues, including the sandag imposition of housing, as well as sewage issue, which is continuing to be a major issue, and other things such as the relinquishment of the major roads in the near future. Again, I'm excited to run, introduce myself to you, and I appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Mr. Rowan, your turn, but I first want to apologize for getting your first name wrong, so please accept my apologies. You're up.
Hi, I'm Tim Rowan. I first want to thank everybody at the shores for putting on this first forum. I think it's great for everyone to get to know us. I would certainly want everyone to vote for me because they believe in what I believe in, not because I didn't communicate it well enough. My background, my parents brought me to Coronado in 1962. I attended Sacred Heart School, Coronado Junior High School, and I graduated from CHS in 1975. I earned a BA in Business Administration at St. Mary's College of California. The qualities I bring to council are, I will offer the residents of Coronado a true long-term perspective of Coronado. I'm honest. What you see is what you get. I own my positions and I accept responsibility for those. I am a candidate who truly has no other political agenda. I'm indebted to and I'm influenced by no one other than my wife. I have the courage to stand my convictions and the voice to express them. I was raised with Midwestern values. We stand by our family, our friends, and our neighbors. We are not afraid to work hard, get dirty, and communicate clearly. I'm physically prudent. I don't spend what I don't have. In times of crisis, I scale back until that time has passed. As for the major issues I think Coronado is facing, I think we need honest and open communication between council and residents. I think our council needs to stop hiding behind the Brown Act. We need a council that owns their accountability and responsibility for their actions and their inactions. I think we need to join the IBWC lawsuit. Hopefully, our litigant need to join is passed. But Coronado needs to start mending fences, and I think this is the beginning. We need a full review of the golf course sewage plant issue. We need full disclosures of all the other options and a full costs for all options. We need to do a full EIR. We need stop sandbags, required new housing units. We need to be drafting litigation, not hiring consultants to figure out where to put those units. We need a balance between business and residents. I think that is skewed at present. We need to make Discover Coronado work better for the residents of Coronado. We need honest and open staff reviews of projects, not just staff presenting one side of issues. We need open reasoning during the grant process. Council should publicly state why they support and/or don't support grants. And lastly, I think we need to overlook the needs and wants of K's and shores residents. I think that's something that's happened in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much. And I need to just remind everyone of a two-limit, time limit on all the answers. But thank you. Those are very good introductions. On June 16th, 2020, the city council, by a five-to-zero vote, approved acceptance of the $22 million financial package from Caltrans to take over the operation of State Routes 75 and 282 in Coronado. Senate Bill SB 479 did not pass this year due to a timing issue in the assembly. But Tony Atkins, president pro temp of the California State Senate, is still pursuing a timely resolution of this issue when the Senate returns in January 2021 after their recess. Counting on a positive legislative outcome, our first question deals with vehicle speed on State Highway 75 between the shores and the city facilities. Presently, we have a fast-moving vehicle traffic. The current speed limit along the shores is 45 miles per hour. South-moving vehicle traffic races at this speed or higher, and is quite dangerous. Question number one: Since we are a residential community, like the area directly off the bridge, please give us your thoughts about changing the current speed limit to 25 or 30 miles an hour once the city is in control of the strand. Mr. Donovan, it's your turn to answer that question.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, I think I would point out that the speed on the strand is an issue actually all up and down the strand. And I'm not belittling the stretch in front of the shores, but particularly recently, in the past several months, we've had a problem with racing up and down the strand. In fact, I saw just a few days ago, a police officer stopped a car on the strand going over 100 miles per hour. So I think, I know I am, and I think the rest of the council and the city manager and police chief are aware of the speeding issue that we have on that highway. As far as the run along the strand, or in front of the shores, one thing I would point out is that as part of the Hotel Dell remodel, there'll be a light now placed right at Avenida del Sol. So that hopefully will slow people down a little bit between there and Avenue de la Avenida. I would not be a proponent of reducing the speed limit on that road below 40, 45 miles per hour. And the reason is because there's really, no one should be crossing that segment of street. There's a side street where, of course, City Hall and the community center is. And if people are going to cross, they really should be using the new crosswalk up by the new stoplight or the stoplight down at the main entrance to the shores. So I would not be a proponent of lowering that speed limit. I would be a proponent of, of course, asking the chief of police to spend some more time, maybe add some more visibility to the police officers to monitor the speed and start handing out more tickets if that is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Remember now the two-limit time limit, right? Mr. Duncan, it's now your turn, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate Mike's comments that he just made, and I agree with many of them. I do disagree about the area, particularly in front of the shores, in regard to the speed limit. I think it's a perfect place to actually lower the speed limit to 30 miles per hour. That is a very busy area for many reasons. Pedestrians, people park along the road, not just in the parking lot in front of the city area, but out on the street. There are crosswalks. There are tourists in that area. There's people leaving the beach from Avenida del Sol as well as the street down below it. I think it could be done. I mean, certainly, if you look at the struggles we've had on Fourth with enforcing that type of speed limit, it is a major struggle. But that doesn't mean we can't try, reduce that speed limit. I know we've had problems with Caltrans and haven't been able to do it before this. But if it's possible to do it, I think it's worth doing it. And I'm not talking about the entire strand. I'm talking about the question you asked in front of the shores. The rest of the strand below that is very, very different in regard to parking and everything else. But yes, as Mike said, I do agree, and within budget constraints, right? We have budget constraints right now. We need to be fiscally responsible. But I do believe we can have more enforcement as well. I am a proponent of traffic enforcement and increasing it as reasonably possible. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Mr. Rowan with your answer to this very important question.
I think Coronado, and I've actually proposed this to council before, but I think that Coronado should actually develop, whatever it takes, 10, 15, 20 temporary speed limit signs. And I think that we should put those in areas that we think it might help to reduce speed limits. This might be a great place to do that, where we could bring it down to 25, see how that affects the town, how it affects the people in the shores. They may not like it. But just doing things and trying things, I think we need to do more of that. I think that Coronado tends to kind of just go all or nothing. And I don't think it would cost much to have, you know, some temporary signs that you go out and you put sandbags on and bring a speed limit down to 20 miles an hour, maybe on Second Street, if they think that that would help get people to not cut down Second Street, you know, base people, and just drive for a month or whatever, two weeks, whatever it takes to figure out if it's going to work or not. And I think the shores, in front of the shores, would be a good place to try that. I do think the speed limit should be reduced there, but we could check it out real easily.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your answer. And Mr. Tanaka, your turn.
Thank you. Generally, I support lower speed limits. You know, I think the faster people go, the more likely you are to have speed-induced problems. But in order to lower a speed limit, you have to do a speed survey, and then you have to legally, in California, set your speed limits around what the 85th percentile of traffic is doing in an area. So it is unrealistic to think that we could lower the speed limit in front of the shores to 25 miles an hour, because that's just not what the traffic is currently going at. And one of the frustrations about running for city council is in, if it were just up to us, I think the four of us could come up with a good idea for what a speed limit would be, whether it's on a trial basis or so on. But it's not up to us. We have to follow the law. And the law doesn't let city council set the speed limit to anything it wants. You have to, again, do an accurate survey of what the current average speeds are, and you have to link your speed limits to that survey. To not do that would create legally a speed trap, and it would mean our tickets wouldn't be defensible in court. Mr. Donovan also brought up enforcement. So whatever the speed limit is, and again, I'd love to see it lower. I think 45 is too high for that area. You would still need to target your enforcement to that area. And I don't want to mislead the shores into thinking that it would be easy to have a police officer in that spot all the time. But generally speaking, we have something like three officers out on patrol and a watch commander. So you have to be realistic about how often you could direct those resources to any one area. And we could target it for a period of time or a certain time of day, but all of our residents have the same problems that they'd like to see more enforcement. So the deeper issue at some point might be looking at what is our current police department structure? And as Mr. Duncan mentioned, you know, we have to live within our means. So can we afford something more, and would it really be worth the added cost? Or do we have to make do with our current staffing in the police department? But to recap, I would be happy to see lower speed limits, but I don't think 25 miles an hour is doable or realistic. So getting it down even five or 10 miles an hour might be the more realistic way to approach that problem.
Okay, thank you. This may be the most important question of the evening, and it calls for only a simple answer. The intersection of Avenida de las Arenas and Highway 75 is extremely wide for pedestrians and bikes to safely cross the street. Drivers making left turns out of the shores are often in a hurry. Residents have witnessed many near misses. We worry someone will be injured or killed because of a vehicle failing to yield to those in crosswalks. Our committee has been successful in having the crosswalks strike and adding a bit more signage, but it doesn't do the job. If Coronado was fortunate enough to take over Highway 75, there are some obvious fixes that will provide a much safer pedestrian passage. For starters, eliminating the wide northern crosswalk in favor of a narrower southern one has the benefit of both a shorter walk across the intersection and having only one turn lane exit in the shores onto South 75. In addition to the crosswalk removal, reconfiguring the timing of the traffic lights at the intersection to maximize pedestrian safety is necessary. A good example of this is at the intersection of Pomona and Highway 75, where traffic cannot turn until pedestrians have completed crossing. Question number two: If you are elected to our city council, can we count on you to do all you can to quickly rectify the dangers at this busy intersection? Mr. Duncan, you're up first.
Thank you. Yes, 100%. If you look at that area, you're actually very fortunate that it is very conducive to getting rid of the northern crosswalk. It isn't a super-high-traffic-business area on all four corners, et cetera. Yeah, we have to do it legally. It has to be analyzed. But that northern crosswalk really serves no purpose that cannot easily be handled by the southern crosswalk. So I think that's a simple answer. I 100% agree with it. And frankly, I agree with looking at safety issues all over town. That's one of the main reasons the city is seeking relinquishment and why I support it 100%. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. And now, Mr. Rowan, it's your turn.
The short answer would be, yes, I would support all of those. I would also support more if we needed to, such as flashing lights, you know, on the crosswalk if those were necessary. I would agree with Mr. Duncan. I mean, Coronado is about riding bikes and walking, and we need to make our streets safe. I think we should do whatever we need to. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Tanaka, your turn to answer.
The approach that I would suggest is that first, we should have city leaders, like, you know, the two of us that are elected out of this pool of four, meet with shores members and shores leadership to gain the perspective that you had mentioned in your question. Because I do value the people who are boots on the ground and see that intersection the most. I would point out that the four of us are not traffic engineers, and the most dangerous thing you can do is ask a politician to just come up with the answer to something based on their own intuition about what they think is the right answer and what they think you want to hear. I'm not a traffic engineer, and so I'm not going to spitball to you right now what I think the answer is. But I think a big part of city leadership and being on the city council is working with your professional, you know, staff, particularly in this case with traffic engineers, to try to come up with a range of options of what is possible, what is logical, what are best practices, and then bring those possibilities back to shores members and shores leadership. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I think I know what the right answer is, but I am going to tell you that I'm not a traffic engineer, and none of the four of us are. So I think we can do a better job at bridging you and the shores with your city professionals and trying to give you a range of options that hopefully makes sense to you and to the city. And I'm not a big fan of relinquishment, but I will admit that since it creates a pool of money that we can use to fix traffic problems along the state highway route, that's certainly money that we could apply to a solution if we come to one. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, your turn to answer, please.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure about the idea of changing the crosswalk, the north and south. I'd have to think about that. The one thing that comes to my mind that I believe wouldn't be too hard to do would be that right now, when the crossing light is on for the pedestrians, it still allows vehicular traffic if the people get out of the way in the street. To me, we ought to look at, and I agree with Mr. Tanaka, that none of us are traffic engineers, and traffic is a bit of an art and a science, which, again, we can discuss at a later time. But one thing it seems to me that would be something we could do would be have the pedestrian light come on with no vehicular traffic. So in other words, keep the vehicle lights red during the period when pedestrians will cross. I mean, that way, they could cross through all four of the different streets, areas, and then keep the pedestrians on the sidewalks when the vehicular traffic is in motion. Again, I think that would have to be analyzed and looked at. It would delay the traffic, obviously, on the strand, which might be a concern during rush hour. But I think there could be some things like that looked at, and I would certainly be an advocate for doing a study like that, to look at what we could do to make pedestrian traffic more safe at that intersection.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donovan. Question number three: What is your position on beautifying the median on Route 75 that runs between the shores and City Hall? What can the city do to make this median a focal point for both the shores and the entrance to Coronado along the strand? Mr. Rowan, it's your turn to answer, please.
Well, I think I would not be adverse to looking at beautifying it. I also think the area around the bike path could be made better. I don't know, you know, if there's water there currently, so I don't know about planting. I would certainly be open to taking a look at it. I would be certainly open to doing anything that's monetarily prudent to do. I do think that both those are eyesores, and we should do a better job. But I just don't know the particulars, so I can't say anything more than that.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Tanaka, it's your turn, sir.
Well, something that I've been thinking about lately, people who know me know I'm a big fan of Plumerias. And something that's interesting about Plumerias, they don't require much water. They don't require much maintenance, and they're easy to take care of. They're not the type of plant that grows really fast and creates maintenance problems. And so when I've been driving down the strand, I've been thinking that a project that I would be interested in pursuing would be a Plumeria project for the strand, because we already have some flowering aloe, if you notice, in certain parts along the strand. And that was picked deliberately, again, for some of those similar reasons. It won't require a lot of water or maintenance. And when, I didn't know this until recently, when an aloe plant blooms, it really creates some pretty stunning flowers. I also want to compliment the current city council. They finally have taken a lead on beautifying some of the area near the shores, and I'll accept some of the blame. Councils I've been on, we just didn't prioritize that, and I think in hindsight, we probably should have. Councils I've been on, we just didn't prioritize that. And, and I think in hindsight, we probably should have done more. I can recall an instance where Phil Monroe tried to make that an issue. And then we, as a council, we just didn't find the money to pursue it. So again, I, I think that especially with relinquishment money coming in, we should really consider what type of plantings. The one thing I will criticize the current council for is I think that they've gone a little too heavy with cactus. And again, cactus is, is pragmatic and prudent, but it's not necessarily beautiful. And it's certainly something you don't want to stumble into. So that's why I would offer Plumeria as a possible, uh, alternative. And that when Plumeria are really doing well, you know, they're a great smelling flower. If we put a lot of those all the way down the strand, that really could be a stunning kind of islander thing. Uh, I'd love to be a Plumeria city in that way. So anyway, those are some thoughts that I have.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And next, we have Mr. Donovan. Could you answer that question, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, I, I understand the question, uh, because that's been a particular annoyance. I know that, that strip down there along the shores, we were able to get some, some things done up closer to the Hotel Dell, which, uh, we have put in some, some low water landscaping. One of the problems along that section of the shores, which again, should be solved a bit when relinquishment goes through, is that, um, that really is the responsibility of Caltrans to maintain. Now, in the last couple of years, we've been able to negotiate with Caltrans for them to pay us, the city of Coronado, to do some of that maintenance, some of that landscape maintenance, which, which we've done. One of the complexities with that particular area is that because it's along a state highway, and I presume it will still be the same when we take it over, but it's something we can look into, that when you work on that, you have to basically close down the lanes on both sides of that median. So you have to have a, you have to have police officers out there. You have to have the lanes properly cordoned off. And, you know, Caltrans, that, that's too hard for them. That's a pretty low priority. So we understand, we the city understand the issue. Uh, as we work through the Hotel Dell remodel, uh, we do plan to put some new plantings in those median areas. And then we'll, we'll certainly find a way to maintain those better than we have when, when Cal, while Caltrans has on those.
And thank you. And finally, Mr. Duncan, uh, your answer to that question, sir.
Thank you. I am definitely in support of beautifying that median as well as the area near the shores path, you know, in between the shores and, and the beach. My understanding from having seen some plans is what the Dell is doing with their master plan in that area uh, is pretty impressive and very nice and something reciprocal on the other side of the shores area would be wonderful as well. Specifically as to the median, I'll use Mr. Tanaka's phrasing and say, I'm not a botanist, so I cannot comment on the appropriateness of Plumeria, but I do like Plumeria. But as he also stated in regard to the other subject, I would rely on staff to present an appropriate plan. I don't think it would be that expensive. We do have other medians in town, including Up on Orange, which are pretty incredible and pretty nice, even though they're different and not, wouldn't be the same. Uh, but definitely something can be done, uh, to beautify that area. I, right now, unfortunately, I, I wish we were, that relinquishment had already happened. I am a big fan of relinquishment for multiple reasons, but the Dell is closing down parts of that specific area just north of the shores every night almost right now in regard to their construction. I've been down there and looked at it three or four nights after midnight where they're digging and doing tunnels and different things for their constructions. So in any event, the short answer, yes, I support beautification and I definitely think it's possible.
Okay, thank you very much. Many people ride their bicycles to the beach, which is a good thing. At South Beach, which borders the shores community, we have three streets that connect bicyclists to the beach. Avenida del Sol, Avenida de las Arenas, and Avenida Lunar. The city owns Avenida del Sol and has easement rights for public parking at the other two. Question number four. What would you think of more bicycle parking for beachgoers? Perhaps a parking space or two at each site designated as bike corrals, like the business district as on Orange Avenue? Mr. Tanaka, please answer that question.
Well, as the reigning Hawaiian shirt-wearing prince of the night on this issue, I'm happy to, to take it up. I was really proud that we, that we as a city took the lead in trying a number of bicycle-friendly options, including bicycle corrals. I regret to say I'm not sure that the bicycle corrals worked as well as I would have liked. I still feel like mo- most bicycle users, where possible, want to park their bike closest to their destination. And I think it was Kerry Downey who, who fought for trying to get more of the smaller, um, bicycle parking apparatus on our sidewalks. And generally speaking, I think having a variety of ways and places for people to park their bikes makes the most sense. Uh, again, I would certainly consult the shores on this. If there was a strong feeling against such a project like a bicycle corral taking up a parking space in the shores, that would be something that I would consider. The city tried to put a public restroom in near the shores, and I still think that was a good idea, but shores residents didn't. And they fought us all the way to the coastal commission and they won. So, you know, the lesson I would learn from that is again, if, on something like a bicycle corral, if shores residents, particularly the towers closest to that proposed amenity, were very strongly opposed, then that would be a big factor in my decision-making. But the bottom line is I think there are lots of ways to make it easier to park a bike, uh, in those areas that are well-traveled. And perhaps the easiest and smartest way is to come up with smaller bicycle parking solutions so that individual bikes can find spots to park rather than a bicycle corral. Because if you put the corral too far away from where the users want to go, then theoretically, they're not going to use it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tanaka. And Mr. Donovan, it's your turn.
Uh, thank you. I think, um, well, one thing I'll point out is that, uh, along the, the, I guess the promenade from Avenida del Sol along the shores, there's not supposed to be any bicycles ridden along there. And that's been another one of these enforcement issues that it's hard to enforce that because you can't put bollards up to keep the bikes out because it has to be open for people in wheelchairs and people pushing baby buggies and that sort of thing. So I know there's a concern about bicycles continuing down that, that promenade. But as far as, um, at the base of the other two, uh, it seems to me we could figure out a way to add some bicycle parking. Um, I don't know exactly where we would put it. Uh, again, we would, we would need staff to kind of research that. Uh, I, I think people ride their bikes to the beach and they probably come in through those three streets. So it would be a good, it would be good to have a place for them to park their, their bikes and they're not tying them to trees and anything else that's along there. So I guess I don't have a good answer. I would support looking at that. Uh, I don't have a good answer of how exactly we would do it. But I think, uh, people smarter than me that could probably look at that and figure out how to add some bike parking.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Duncan, your turn, please.
Thank you. I served, uh, for many years in the Bicycle Advisory Commission. And we studied parking in various, uh, parts of town, but in particular around the beach from North Beach, Center, down South. And I am a fan of it and we can do it where it doesn't offend the residents and where it works. I do think the bike corrals in the business district have not worked as well as, as hoped. But a lot of other bike parking, it has definitely worked and it frequently has bikes at those locations. I agree, after having spoken with many shores residents about it, they do not like, and it isn't allowed, as Mr. Donovan said, to have bikes, um, being used on the boardwalk in front of the shores. So it does seem like a perfect solution to have some additional bike parking added. Where people are going when they go down that path is usually that beach. When I'm there, I don't see a lot of people riding down that path going to Imperial Beach. So there's a great path on the other side for that. It's much more convenient. So for people going to the beach there, going to the shores, having some additional bike parking would be fantastic. What type of bark, bike parking and how that would be set up, definitely to be determined, but I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowan, your turn.
Yes, um, I would support additional parking there and, um, whether it's a corral in the street like on Orange Avenue or whether it's, um, something up on the sidewalk or a widening of the sidewalk for specifically for parking, parking bikes. All of those are options. Um, I really think taking the parking place is probably the last one, uh, that I would want to go with. I mean, it may be the best and we may should, maybe we should do it, but, um, at North Beach, um, the bike, bike, bike parking works great. It, and it is a corral and it's off the street. Um, I think that, um, bike parking at Center Beach would, um, would work. I think it, uh, you know, having, um, a bike corral there somehow, um, would be a good idea because bikes are tied up everywhere. They're on the, the, the walkways, they're on the railings, they're on the signs, you know, they're, they're locked to everything. Um, so anyway, yes, I think, I think beach, beach bike parking works uh, because the, the, the bikes are in a specific area to go down to the beach. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Great answers. When the shores towers were built, the shores gave an easement to the city for public access to the beach adjacent to our property. The public parking lots at Avenida de las Arenas and Avenida Lunar were established by this easement for vehicle and bike parking only. The boardwalk easement stipulates pedestrians only. Consequently, consequently, the rules posted for the parking lots, beach and boardwalk are city regulations. Here's our concern. These city regulations are routinely ignored. Pedestrians on the boardwalk are constantly being endangered by bike riders in wheels of all types, skateboards, Suris and rollerblades. Active patrolling by the city is noticeably absent. It has become a severe safety issue. Question number five. How can we get police officers to patrol the boardwalk to stop offenders, hand out warnings or tickets, and to educate the public? We need your help on this. Mr. Donovan, it's your turn, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, well, this, I guess this is exactly what I was trying to point out during the last question. And again, like men, like many enforcement areas, this is a tough one because there, there's really no other reason for a, a police officer to be down there. Uh, typically, as part of their routes, uh, the, an officer will drive his vehicle down the beach actually and then come out at the, uh, at the turnaround there at, uh, Avenida del Sol. And he can see at that point, uh, and it, and if there's a police officer sitting there, obviously that the bikes probably aren't gonna, gonna go down that path. I know when, when the work of the Hotel Dell is doing down there, they're going to raise the, uh, the street up down there at the end where the cul-de-stac is. We're gonna, we're gonna make it a little nicer for that path to go around the cul-de-stac. Uh, and we're gonna put up some additional signage to make sure at least people know that what the rules are. Now, making them follow the rule, of course, is a, is another issue. So I, I guess this goes along with some of the other questions we've had with enforcement. Maybe we could put some cameras up there. Um, I know I mentioned the racing issue we had on the strand. Our police force put up cameras, uh, to monitor that. And when they see, uh, racing, they're, they're able to pick off the license numbers. So maybe we could do something like that. Uh, I understand that problem. So that would be my suggestion at this point to upgrade the signage and maybe put some video cameras there that we could monitor. And then, of course, let the police officers, they're certainly aware of the issue and try to make more rounds there more frequently.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. That area definitely needs some police presence. I, I think foot patrols or bicycle patrols can be targeted during certain times, especially the high-impact times. We're talking about Friday, Saturday and various times during the summer. Yes, we can't put police everywhere all the time. But that doesn't mean that we can't put foot patrols or bike patrols in certain areas at certain times when it makes sense. And that is definitely what I would advocate. I'm not sure about cameras. If you saw all the people on bikes riding up and down and on cameras, I don't think, what would you really do about it? The only thing it would do would prove what we already know, that people regularly violate the rules there. Now, I'm not for, you know, throwing people in jail for riding their bike there periodically or if a tourist doesn't know what they're doing. But I do think some active presence targeted at certain times would help with this problem. And there's a lot of residents that live in the shores. And if that's what they're asking for, I think it deserves some attention. The rest of the city, you get five people on the street complaining about a traffic issue on that street and the police will send a presence there off and on for a week to make sure they suppress it. Why can't we do the same thing for the shores residents? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rowan, it's your turn, sir.
It's a problem, no doubt. Um, I'm a firm believer that bikes and people don't mix and, and it, uh, there are many places in Coronado where they don't mix well. Um, I think the Suris are a real problem and I would love to see Suris, you know, outlawed basically. Um, other than that, uh, the shores really is the worst as far as bikes and, um, and people mixing. It's, it's, it's a narrower sidewalk than the promenade down on the bay. Um, so it doesn't handle it as well. Um, anyway, I, I, whether it's police presence, perhaps I, I know that parking officers can't give tickets and they can't, but they could certainly have a presence down there which might get people not to ride their bikes and it might be a way to kind of extend our police presence down there. Um, it's something that needs to be looked into and, and it needs to be dealt with. Um, I'm not sure the best way at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowan, for that answer. Uh, Mr. Tanaka, your turn to answer the question.
Thank you, Jerry. I think one of the things that can be done within our budget, and it was suggested by Mr. Duncan, we have had bicycle patrols and on-foot patrols in the past principally on Orange Avenue. Because a lot of people complain about the same thing there, how often people ride their bikes and either don't know you're not supposed to or don't care or, or have no expectation that they're going to be caught. So certainly within the existing police department structure, I'd be delighted to see more bicycle and foot patrols in the summer when we tend to have more visitors and more people violating. And, and I also agree with Mr. Duncan that, that there are enough people living in the shores to certainly expect that our police department would make that same effort the same way we would on First Street or Alameda or wherever there would be a problem. So I'd be happy to see that. But the, the bigger problem is you can only provide so much protection under the current budget structure. I don't think any of the four of us are really looking for ways to spend a mil, an extra million dollars next year that we weren't spending this year. And so if a fully loaded police officer costs something like a hundred thousand dollars, and usually you need to hire something like three or four in order to see one routinely in an area you want, you can see that it's cost prohibitive to really make promises about more patrols and enforcement than you're really willing to spend the money on. But again, within our current structure, any way we can get more officers on bikes, on foot patrols. And then Mr. Donovan mentioned that, that the, the vehicles our police officers drive can drive on the beach. So I would certainly be supportive of seeing an increased police presence in a modest way, perhaps using those interceptor vehicles. Because that would be a way for the police to be able to perhaps access in the area of the shores, even though the beach is pretty narrow over there. But those are some things within our current budget that I, I think we could do to improve that. Maybe another question that'd be worth asking is how many of those rules that exist are ones that the, the shores feel strongly about? Because there's an old Navy phrase that a, a rule that you can't enforce is a bad rule. So that's something else I'd be willing to look at, too.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Uh, the public beach adjacent to the shores community is the narrowest strip of Coronado Beach. Fires on this narrow beach Fires on this narrow beach were prohibited until recently when the city council reversed the rules. Consequently, we are now overrun with beach fires. Because the beach is so narrow, the smoke is very concentrated, making the air unhealthy. Because of the carcinogens, residents are being forced to close their windows on hot summer nights. We are not opposed to beach fires, but are requesting that they be restricted to areas farther north where the beach widens and will not adversely affect homeowners. Question number six. What are your thoughts on finding a solution that allow people to enjoy beach fires, but at the same time protects comfort and health of residents? Mr. Duncan, it's your turn to answer.
That's a great question and frankly, it's an issue that I did not hear from any of the shores residents that was a major issue for them. But I, another person I was meeting with today used a term I hadn't heard before. He said, "I'm a pandemic walker." He walks to get his exercise because you can't do a lot of other things. And I walk in front of the shores at least a few times a week at night and I'm regularly surprised at how late people have the fires. So I'll readily admit, I don't know what the restriction is on how late they're allowed to have them, but very late at night I see fires there and it seems that there should be some reasonable restrictions. As to moving them more to the northerly area, to be honest with you, that is where I have gone for my triplet children's birthdays every year in July and had a fire in a container that we bring and it's been wonderful. If it's possible to restrict it to a certain area, I think that might be a great idea. I would like to look into all the rules surrounding this a little bit more thoroughly before committing to that specific promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rohan, your turn to answer, please.
I think if it's affecting the air quality, it's something that needs to be looked at and needs to be looked at quickly. I would not be adverse to banning, you know, fires down at the shores. I grew up loving to go to North Beach and using those fire rings. I would wonder how many of those rings are actually used by Coronado people and how many people, how many of them are used by non-Coronado residents. It may be time to look at doing away with those. I don't know. But if it's affecting the air quality at the shores, we need to get rid of them, bottom line. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tanaka, please answer the question.
I was on the city council when we reviewed the current ordinances about what you can and can't do with regard to fires on the beach. The rules that existed when the city council I was on reviewed it, they allow them obviously in the fire pits over by Sunset Park so that those pits there, you know, exist for that purpose. And the thing that surprised me is our ordinance allows someone to have a beach fire anywhere on the beach if they bring their own kind of container. That way theoretically they could roast hot dogs or hamburgers or do something small. And you could bring even theoretically a Weber or something and do a charcoal-based fire. I didn't support that. I thought that was a fairly dumb, not pragmatic thing to do to let people have a beach fire anywhere on the beach. But for whatever reason, the council as a whole kind of was supportive of leaving those rules alone. I very much support the fire rings down by Sunset Park. So those I think are great. I think we can police them right. We could put out the right receptacles to collect charcoals and so on. I am not supportive of beach fires near the shores. Your question threw in the premise that it's a narrow strip of beach and I agree with that. I also know that some of your residents, Tricia Trobridge, used to send us pictures of all the vandalism done with the spare charcoal in that area on the various cement walkways and stairs into the beach. So I don't see a big utility to allowing fires there. I don't know many residents that go and do it. And again, the one group of residents that would probably make use of that would be people from the shores. So if people from the shores contact the city and are not such big fans of having beach fires there, that opinion would mean more to me. I don't think there are a lot of other people from around town that have a habit of bringing their own fire accoutrement and having their own beach fires near the shores. So again, I don't see a lot of wisdom in allowing beach fires near the shores and I would be very interested in considering whether or not that's good public policy in the future to maybe restrict that. And generally to restrict beach fires to any location except where the rings are located at North Beach. So that's where I'm at on beach fires.
Okay, and Mr. Donovan?
Yes, thanks. Yeah, I'm aware of the fire rings up at North Beach, which are used quite often. This is the first complaint that I've heard of beach fires down by the shores. But I do agree with the beach being so narrow. I'm also not aware that people are allowed to build fires of their own. I think, and I'll double check, but my understanding was all fires had to be within the fire rings provided by the city. But I mean, the short answer is what the others have said. If the fires are on that narrow part of the beach and they're causing air pollution or problems for the residents at the shores, then I don't see a reason why we wouldn't just maintain the fire rings at the North Beach.
Okay, thank you. We know you are aware of the continued sewage runoff, raw sewage, heavy metals and other contaminants that are routinely spilling from Tijuana that requires closing Coronado Beach and the state beach near the caves all too often. This issue is so important to the health of the Navy SEALs, surfers and swimmers that there was a recent 60 Minutes TV show segment on this problem. Question number seven. What do you suggest the city do to eliminate this harmful and disgusting situation? Mr. Rohan, you're first, please.
Well, tough question. First of all, the IWBC lawsuit or IBWC lawsuit has been put on hold because there's $300 million that's to be used to help with the Tijuana River problem. I'm not sure that that's gonna be enough, but it's certainly a great start and it's certainly a win. Unfortunately, that money, as I understand it, cannot be used further down at Puto Banderas, I believe it's called. But it's another sewage outflow, huge sewage outflow. So that hasn't been dealt with. I think that Coronado really needs to band with the other cities around us and we need to take this on, you know, as one. I think that's part of rebuilding our relationships with the cities around us. I think if we attack it individually as we have been doing, it's gonna take much longer and it's gonna be much harder to accomplish anything. Anyway, I'm very appreciative of the $300 million. I think it's gonna help, but I think, I don't think it's gonna end with the $300 million.
Okay, Mr. Tanaka, your turn.
Well, as I understand it, I agree with what Mr. Rohan was saying that it's a great accomplishment to get that $300 million. But a limitation is, as I understand it, that money has to be spent on the US side of the border. So I think in the near term, that's where we need to focus, that at least now there is a source of funding. And traditionally, the problem is, you know, Mexico is a sovereign country. We can ask them to do things, but they don't have to do it. And we obviously know that they don't necessarily have the budget to put in the sorts of improvements we want them to. So we should still continue to either try to, you know, carrot or stick in terms of find solutions that would work for them on their side of the border. But realistically, I think we need to focus on that $300 million. Make sure that it's spent properly, the way it's supposed to be. And focus on what we can control, things on our side of the border to try to lessen that problem. And then, you know, the long-term solution would be to try to see what Mexico would want to do on their side of the border and can we come up with ways to assist them and make it a reality on their side so that they want to be a partner in this process.
And Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I would say there has been a lot of progress on this problem over the last three or four years. The $300 million that's been alluded to is a big step forward, but obviously it's not enough. The effort right now is to prioritize specific projects that have been developed by EPA and work with the IBWC and how to manage those projects. As was mentioned, that money has to be spent on the US side. So these will be projects to basically, in simplistic terms, capture the sewage and either treat it or dispose of it before it gets to the Pacific Ocean. So I think the goal that I read for that $300 million is to go from over, I think, 150 days a year of waste in our ocean water down to 10 or 20. So obviously even 10 or 20 is not satisfactory, but this is a start. So while we manage the $300 million projects, we need to continue to make sure the federal government is aware of the problem and decide how to handle it moving forward. Because Tijuana is still growing and as Tijuana grows, there's a lot of dwellings that have no sewer systems at all. So it's just sewage is being generated and it's just flowing into the rivers and getting into the ocean, even if they upgrade their sewer system. So the problem is definitely on the Tijuana side and we have to figure out how to work with Mexico to solve that for a long-term, non-band-aid type fix.
Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Obviously, I think we all agree and everyone agrees. Unfortunately, you can even describe this, in my opinion, as a bipartisan or a nonpartisan issue. The sewage, the horrible problems that have occurred from that sewage to Imperial Beach and to Coronado just have to be stopped. As people have discussed, the $300 million that was approved in the USMCA is now with the EPA. Specific projects have actually already been approved and the EPA is starting on those specific projects. No one, I don't believe, lives in the fantasy world where they think this is going to solve everything and it's 100% done. The question you really ask, which is very hard to get any kind of specific answer to, is what does Coronado do going forward? There's no active lawsuit to join. That's not a realistic thing to look at. What do we do? We continue to advocate like Coronado has done, ensure that we do keep the pressure on all political figures and people in power on this issue. It has to stay in the forefront. When it got to the forefront politically and in the press and people started to push, we're actually able to get something done. I do agree with the concept and the theme of working well with all of our neighbors and working well with all of the agencies. And most of the press conferences I've seen recently, there has been, again, a bipartisan group of political figures at those press conferences, not looking to blame each other or to blame the cities for things that were done in the past, but to look to move forward together to actually solve the problem. Because that's what we should all really care about. Do we want to solve the sewage problem? Or do we want to point fingers at people for political reasons and try to blame them for things in the past? I'm for moving forward and looking at solutions, but the only actual solution right now is to advocate for focus on this issue, more funding and networking with our local communities and all politicians at local, state and federal levels. Thank you.
Okay, great answers. Question number eight. What are your thoughts about solutions and possible locations for the state's mandate that Coronado must provide additional low-cost housing? Mr. Tanaka, it's your turn.
Well, the city of Coronado has actually done a very admirable job of providing low-cost housing in the past because when we had a redevelopment agency from the 1980s until, I think it was about 2012, 20% of all of the money that we spent had to go to affordable housing. So there's a senior affordable housing at Sixth and Orange where our old police station used to be. We also acquired more property next to that police station in order to create as wonderful a senior housing project as we could. We had acquired property a block over on Orange Avenue. There is a lot of affordable housing that exists because of the legacy of redevelopment in Coronado. I don't generally support mandates out of Sacramento because generally I don't think they understand Coronado. I don't think they like Coronado. I don't think they have any interest in doing us any favors. If this question is about the RENA number of 912 or 101 more units, I don't support that because anyone who's worth a damn in Coronado doesn't support more density in town. And so I certainly don't support making our community more dense and putting in more cars, more people using our sewer system and so on. I think generally people in Coronado would like to at least maintain where we're at or try to make it less dense. That's not very easy to do in the state of California. But again, I believe in affordable housing, but what really will make it affordable is if it pops up organically in places that people want to move to and can be supported and are near the jobs and things that they want to live in. Coronado is a built-out community and I don't see a place for more housing.
Okay, thanks. Next is Mr. Donovan, your turn, please.
Yes, I think, I understand the question is focused on affordable housing. But really, the affordable housing is not the main issue. The main issue is the overall number of what's being mandated. And it's being mandated by Sandag. It's a local agency responsible for housing. And they're being, obviously it has to be approved by Sacramento, but it's Sandag who developed the methodology that forced this large number on us. And as Mr. Tanaka mentioned, we've got over 180 affordable housing units now that have been developed over the last 20 years with community development money that Sacramento has actually cut off. They cut that off about, I remember right, 10 or 15 years ago. So really what we're up against is the overall number, which we've exhausted all the appeals, administrative appeals. We've tried to work with Sandag. So at this point, we're, I think by the end of this week, we're gonna announce what we're gonna do going forward with some legal actions because this is just totally inequitable and unfair to base 912 units on one criteria, which is the number of jobs in our city limits, and then turn around and be the only agency in the state that says, "Oh, by the way, all the jobs on military bases in your city have to count."
Okay, thank you. Mr. Duncan, it's your turn, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan definitely hit the nail on the head with, it is absolutely ridiculous that all the Navy jobs count against us for the job total to assign housing allocations. The fact is, even if the Navy builds an apartment building on the base, it doesn't help us at all. It makes zero sense, not to mention the Navy personnel that lives on carriers and other housing there. We really need to pursue litigation. And as a lawyer, I don't like to advocate litigation. When people come to me and say, "Hey, I want to sue somebody over this, their driveway is one inch too far on my property." I say, "Is that worth 50 or $100,000 to you to prove them wrong?" I don't advocate litigation lightly, but in this specific situation, we 100% need to pursue all remedies to stop this allocation. It just makes no sense and it is dramatically unfair. At the hearing on it, we came very close to having the vote go in our favor. I believe it was something along the lines of 14 out of 16 or 719, whatever it was, cities voted with us. It was very close. But the fundamental analysis that they used was wrong and unfair and we must absolutely fight it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rohan, you're next.
I would agree. We need to fight it, litigate it. I think we should be pursuing litigation on all fronts rather than hiring consulting firms to try to figure out where to put the units. I think one of the big areas of litigation, and I've been told this by a number of attorneys, is that we have, we do not have our own sewage facility. One of Sandag's requirements is that if you don't have your own sewage facility and if you either don't have more capacity, if the person who is accepting your sewage will not give you more capacity and or, and you're approaching that or at that, that they cannot ask you to have more units. We are not at our limit, but we are certainly close. With the expansion of the Dell, we're gonna be even closer, if not at that limit. So I think that's a... So I think that's a really good area of litigation. Unfortunately, developing a sewage treatment plant on the Gulf Coast will probably do away with that. So we might want to hold off on that till we figure it out. But anyway, that's, yes, we need to litigate. Thank you.
Okay, question number nine. Gentlemen, what are your views on the issue of diversity and inclusion in our community? Mr. Donovan, would you be the first to answer this?
Well, certainly. I, first of all, let me just say unequivocally, I think. Everyone needs to be treated equally and without any concern over race, religion. You know, all the things that people worry about. The issue is how do we, how do we advocate for that? How do we try to get that into our, our community? And the hard part about that is that there's nothing, well, I don't want to say nothing, but. The city council, the city staff, the state of California, the county of San Diego. Cannot legislate to people to first of all, understand and embrace diversity. And treat everyone equal. To me, the issue is, it's got to be education. And we need to educate people for what's right, unfortunately, which they should know. And the other thing is we need to start early with people while they're in school. So I know the Coronado Unified School District is working on a program. To better educate our, our young kids in the public schools. And I'm sure the private schools are doing the same thing. But to me, this is where we need to focus the effort. And as a city, I mean, we should be doing everything we can to support that.
Hey, thank you. Next, it's Mr. Duncan. Would you answer that question, please?
Sure, absolutely. My firm belief, right, is that there has definitely been discrimination. Or at least, you know, racial comments made to kids in our schools. You know, many of them spoke out recently for the first time and their comments, I believe them. You know, I think their comments are valid. I don't believe that means our community and the vast majority of people here are racist, okay? Or have this type of discriminatory feelings. What can we really do about it? Yeah, I mean, there's school board issues. I support the school board reviewing this and working on the plan as Mr. Donovan mentioned. But I am very much about measured and informed decisions. I do not support quick radical changes. That doesn't mean you can't do something quickly. Like create an advocate for the children and maybe speak with some of the. Small amount of racial minorities at the schools proactively. And not wait to see if they feel comfortable enough at some point after they graduate to come forward and share their experiences. But I do agree that in order to really diversify our community more. Other than doing things such as outreach in regard to hiring, expanding maybe where we look for certain personnel. I do want to compliment the police department in regard to, it is a fairly diverse police department. We have many different people from different backgrounds and a lot of female officers as well. That I think the city should be very, very proud of. So I am understanding of the issues. I'm concerned about the issues. But I'm not for any massive radical changes. I'm for well-measured, studied decisions. Thank you.
And next, it's Mr. Rohan. Could you answer that question, please?
Yes, inclusion and diversity, we need to do a better job on both, bottom line. I would agree with Mr. Duncan that it needs to start or it's best started at a young age. I think that that's one of the reasons that I do support the school district's. Proposals to, to have more, to teach more inclusion and diversity and have a more diverse curriculum. I think, I think it might be best to start that at younger ages, maybe first through six. And then progress it one year, every year thereafter, so that. So that the kids are carrying it with them and we're not trying to take a 12th grader who is. Kind of set in their ways and more apt to, to really, you know, not accept it. And, and so that might be a better way to do it, but I think that it's certainly, certainly something we, we need to deal with. It's, it, it was present in 1970 in Coronado and it's certainly just as present today. So whatever we've been doing hasn't worked. We do have a very diverse police force. But it's not really diverse with African-American people and I think we need to do a better job of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I believe it's, Mr. Tanaka, you're next.
One of the things that I think is unique and special about Coronado is how accessible its government is to citizens. In other words, something that Mr. Donovan deserves to be complimented on is I would wager $100. That if any citizen emailed Mr. Donovan tonight, they would get a response back to that email by tomorrow. And I would compliment the whole city council that, you know, I would, I would say routinely that's something that. All council members and the mayor are generally known for, being responsive to the community. On something like institutional racism, there isn't an obvious solution. There isn't something that we could all agendize at the next council meeting and expect by next year to have. That, that problem solved because what makes institutional racism disgusting and invasive is that it doesn't have. An easy, obvious head or thing that you can pluck away. It takes a lot of time to sort of identify where it's at. It takes even longer to come up with solutions that actually root it out. So the one thing I've learned in years of being involved in city government. The one thing that you can provide and is unique about Coronado is you can listen to people. You can be accessible and hear their concerns. I think that those individuals who gathered at Spreckles Park to share their experiences. Were exceedingly brave because I'm sure, you know, they say the common phobia of many people is public speaking. And I think a lot of those people don't prefer public speaking at Spreckles Park. But they did it anyway because they wanted to be heard and they wanted people to know what problems existed. And I think that that's, whichever two of us win this thing, that's one of our jobs is to be. Accessible and be willing to meet with people and sometimes you may not have the answer, but if you meet with people enough, listen to people enough. You might start to discover what the next step should be, what a potential solution is. So I'm a big advocate for whoever wins out of this group needs to be willing to meet with people whenever they want and to be committed to listening.
Okay, thank you. Tourism in Coronado has increased greatly in the last few years. And with the completion of the Dell Coronado expansion, we will have even more. Question number 10. Please give us your thoughts on whether the city should continue. To encourage expansion of tourism and how the increased traffic and resultant parking issues can be controlled. Mr. Duncan, you're first.
That is a great question and actually a fairly difficult question in some respects. Because the initial answer would be, oh, we should be very careful about increasing tourism too much. Yes, our businesses in town need revenue very desperately. But we need to be careful about overrunning the city and making it a really unpleasant place for all of us to live in. Not just during the summer, but even in additional months. However, what has happened? We have the pandemic. We have businesses that are in serious, serious distress. And could easily have a major, major problem. The one good news when the hotels are full is that it generates more revenue. I have heard complaints off and on throughout the years. Some may be valid, some I don't think are. But using more of that revenue at times to mitigate for residents and the community, the impact of that tourism. So do I want to see tourism increase dramatically? No. Do I want to see tourism to the level that Coronado can function well and have a vibrant restaurant? Downtown area and also have additional funds to use for this city? In our city, before the pandemic, pandemic, to be fair to all councils that have come before. It's been in pretty good shape. We have a lot of things here that many communities don't have. We have people coming to trim our trees. We have streets that are in great shape. This is a wonderful place. So right now, do I feel that we need to maintain some tourism and some efforts to fill the hotels once they reopen? Yes, I do. Being, being measured about it and looking at it as we go forward is kind of a different question. And when we get back to a normal reality, what do we actually do? Concerns about advertising for day trippers, things like that, those are valid concerns that we really need to take a look at. And see if there's a better way to use some of those funds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rohan, you're next.
No, we should not increase tourism. I'm not saying that we should decrease tourism either, but. You know, Mr. Duncan talked about, you know, that, that line where. Too, too much tourism leads to not as nice a place to live and, and I think we're, I think we're over that, bottom line. I, I, you know, I want to support the businesses. I want to do all that. I actually think it's a great idea that maybe some of the Discover Coronado money could be used to, to help. Businesses during COVID or to get, get through COVID. But, you know, financially, when the city, when we're not in a pandemic, the city financially is doing great. We don't need to increase the tourism dollars. And we don't need to go off half-cocked right now to, because we're in a pandemic and to increase tourism so much. Because it's really hard to dial back. So no, I would not increase tourism at this time. Thank you.
Okay, great. And Mr. Tanaka.
I, I think balance is the key to dealing with residents versus tourism. I think it's important to acknowledge that we wouldn't balance our budget without tourism. So whether, even though it creates problems for us, we have to manage it effectively. And I always tell people our second biggest revenue source is the TOT, the hotel tax revenue, which has taken a dramatic hit. Because of the pandemic. I think one way to balance the needs of residents versus those tourists. That we need them to stay at our hotels and help pay our bills. I think we need to do a better job of deploying our resources, police and et cetera, at Orange Avenue and Ocean Boulevard. I think when our residents have just had it with tourists, it's when they feel overwhelmed. By people who are rude and inconsiderate on Orange Avenue and Ocean Boulevard. And so to the extent possible within our budget, I would be very, very much in favor of trying to redeploy those, those resources to Orange Avenue to create a presence. We had a question earlier about doing a better job of enforcement near the shores. And, and my answer to that was in the summers, when we know we're going to have the bigger crowds. Move some of those resources either on foot or by bike to, to that stretch of sidewalk. So again, that philosophy is something that I would try to do in terms of trying to manage tourism more successfully. To take the resources that we currently fund and move them in the areas where we know tourists have the greatest impact. And try to get them to behave calm down or, you know, figure somewhere else to visit if they won't do that.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Well, I'll be the fourth person to use the word balance. I mean, the key word here, like I think all of my colleagues have. Have mentioned is there's got to be a balance between the impact of tourism and the residents, what they have to endure. I want to point out that part of the, the reason we have to have a balance. Is because there's not that many businesses in Coronado that can survive on resident business only. When you think about things like online shopping, the large military population we have that can shop. On the base at the commissary and the exchange. A lot of our small shops just would not survive without some level of tourism. So what we need to do is to try to get, you know, what I would call a high-quality tourist. And that's why our focus through Discover Coronado up until the pandemic has been to bring in. To bring in more group, people in groups, the group meetings. Because they tend to have less of an impact than what we like to call day trippers. Who just come over to sit on the beach. They don't spend any money. They bring their own food and drink. Leave a lot of trash, you know, that's the, that's the conventional wisdom of a typical day tripper. So before the pandemic, we focused on groups. Now with the pandemic, businesses are not holding conferences and group meetings. So we pivoted to staycationers. So I would point out that these are not day trippers that I just talked about. But these are people from outside San Diego. That would come down to Coronado and maybe stay at the Dell or stay at one of our other hotels as a kind of a staycation. People within driving distance that wouldn't have to take an air, fly on an airplane, that kind of thing. The other thing we're trying, we've done to mitigate part of the traffic and parking problem is the pre-summer shuttle. That's been a fantastic help during the summer, when, when there's high tourist season. To get cars off the road. And in fact, we pay MTS or subsidize them to provide that service. And that route during the summer is the most highly-used route of any of the MTS bus routes throughout the county. Or throughout the MTS region, anyway.
Hey, thank you. Okay, as a wrap-up, in view of the questions you were asked today. We'd like to give you the opportunity to make a concluding statement. Mr. Rohan, it's your turn.
Yes, in conclusion, first of all, I'd like to again thank everybody at the shores. I'd like to thank the shores residents for taking the time to watch this and to learn about your candidates. I think that's hugely important. I would also like to thank my other candidates for, for being here and, and having such great answers, bottom line. I learned a lot tonight. I hope you did as well. The, finally, I just, I just think that people need to get out. They need to get out and vote and you need to know your candidates, basically. And so please do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next, for the wrap-up, it's Mr. Tanaka.
Well, I want to echo what Tim said. I want to thank the shores for this opportunity to, to speak with all of you as a candidate. And I haven't campaigned with Mike, John or Tim before, so I was a little nervous. I didn't know what to expect. And I can certainly say I've enjoyed this chance to be a candidate with the three of you. I think, I mentioned that Coronado is special because it's small, you know, and in, in terms of local government. You have a chance to have a personal relationship with one or more of your school board members and one or more of your council members. It's realistic to email the mail, to email the mayor of Coronado and get a response back. That's not going to happen if you email Kevin Faulkner. It's not because he's a mean guy. It's because he has, you know, 1.2 million constituents. So who are you going to vote for for city council? Who are you going to vote for for different offices? I have to think that trust comes down to a big factor of, do you know this person? Do you trust them? Do you trust that they're up to the job? And, you know, I'm sure you want to punch me in the face at this point for saying how, how many years I've served in the past. But it's relevant. You already know you can trust me to listen to your concerns, to meet with you. To explain what the city's position is, even if you don't agree with it. And you can trust me to, to, to make solid decisions on behalf of residents and not myself. So if you feel that way about me, I'm, I'm certainly honored to serve you on the city council. And if you don't feel that way, I'll, I'll understand. I won't hold it against you. But anyway, it's an honor to be a candidate.
Thank you. And Mr. Donovan, your wrap-up, please.
Well, yes, thanks. Well, again, same as the others have said, thanks again to Sharon, Ann and you, Jerry. For arranging this forum and for carrying it out. And all of the folks who will take the time to, to view this forum. I think it's, it has been informative and it's, I think, caused us all to, to think. As I mentioned in my opening, I'm running for reelection on my record. And continued advocacy for residential quality of life. I have a full understanding of the issues facing our city and the passion to solve them. If fortunate enough to serve another four-year term on the city council. I will continue to be accessible and responsive to all the residents of Coronado. And ensure everyone understands the logic behind how I arrive at my positions. My background and experience in management, leadership and collaborative problem solving. Is detailed on my campaign website, as is my voting record while on city council. I invite you to visit my website at MikeDonovanCoronado.com. Or you can contact me by email at MikeDonovanCoronado@gmail.com. Again, it's been an honor to serve on the Coronado City Council. And I look forward to earning your vote to represent you for another four years. Please get out and vote. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. I'm really appreciative of the fact to be able to run and connect with people, even though we're in this pandemic situation. I'm not running because I have something against anyone who's been in office before or who is currently in office. I'm running to present myself as a candidate, as an option for one of your two votes. I believe that my last 10 years of volunteering in this town, as well as my legal background, my energy, my fresh perspective potentially on issues is something that could be very valuable to the city. Again, I don't have a problem or anything negative to say about anybody who's been in office before, but I do want to make this point. Nobody owns these offices. Nobody's entitled to be put into office. The voters own the right to decide and every candidate who's been in office or is in office now at one time was exactly where I am, which is a first-time candidate. I believe I can bring a lot of effort and energy and get my hands dirty on the issues to figure out what's going on and to propose things. And just because you propose something and try to push something forward to see if it's possible, doesn't mean it's going to happen for sure. It doesn't mean that you are the traffic engineer or you, whatever the issue may be. The city hires professionals to advise, but that doesn't mean that people on council shouldn't ask questions and push those advisors to see what can be done and what other answers are. If you've watched city council meetings in the past, you may have seen many times where a council member may ask our city attorney. And again, this isn't anything against our city attorney. I think she's very competent and I like her and would look forward to working with her. But I've seen candidate, council members ask questions and then she answers the question and it is not a full answer and the issue just stops and they move forward. I think having another attorney on council who can push those issues, at times maybe an issue needs to be tabled until we can get a full answer. You don't expect a city attorney to have every single answer in full without going and looking at it, but if you have a real question, city council members should get a real answer. And I promise that if I'm elected, I will work solely to advance the best interests of the city and of the community and not myself. I don't look at this as a part-time job. I don't look at this as a source of income for myself and I want to make one commitment tonight before I wrap up, that if I am elected to city council, every dollar of compensation that I receive, which is 900 something dollars a month, I will donate back to a nonprofit in Coronado. I'm truly running to serve the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. On behalf of the residents here at Coronado Shores, I'd like to take this opportunity very quickly to thank our own community alliance group for initiating this. I think this is very, very important. I want to thank them. I also want to thank the candidates for taking your time to address these questions. And to those of you who took the time to listen, I'm sure those of you listening may have other questions or follow-up questions that you'd like to ask the candidates. Their contact information can be found in the email you received from your building manager or on the city's website. Again, thank you for all your participation. I like to end on this note. All the candidates, I think are very worthy of, of this position. I want to wish you all good luck. I know you're counting on us for your votes and whoever gets elected will be counting on you. So thank you and good luck.